Action.
All right, everyone. Welcome to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, April 4th, 2022, 5 o'clock. The nominations for everything have just been closed at the state county and here and everywhere. Teresa, the role, please.
Councilmember Roy A.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, here, all currently present accounted for. An executive session will be held for purposes discussion, consultation, legal advice, and possible direction to the town's attorneys regarding cases pending before the planning commission issues concerning communications regarding such cases compliance with the commission code of conduct. Arizona revised statute thirty eight dash four thirty one dot zero three, Prince A, Prince three, and Prince four. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All fair.
Hi.
And we're back. Welcome, everyone, to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, April 4th, 2022. Let's see here. Mr. Phelps, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which was founded. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you notice on the agenda, what first thing on there says proclamations and this time around, we have a proclamation for the church at the chips ten year anniversary. And I'm going to go ahead and read this because I don't normally do this, but whereas the community of Cave Creek, Arizona has unique and precious diversity of talent with interests such as ranching, rodeo, motorcycles, bicycles, the arts, music, and whereas the Western cowboy culture rugged independence, exceptional stock handling skills, freedom of expression, love of God and country embraced as a fundamental element of the character of the community and whereas businesses in the community had the opportunity to thrive because of the attraction of Western cowboy culture to people from across the nation and world and whereas Pastor Steve Gilbertson and wife Donna answered the call minister to the people of this community through the lens of its cowboy culture with the establishment of a church called Ecclesia in the heart of Cave Creek in two thousand twelve, graciously hosted by the Buffalo Chip Saloon. And whereas April 10th, 2022 marks the ten year anniversary, the Ecclesia Church at the chips service to this community. Now, therefore, I am mayor of Cave Creek, Arizona, to hereby congratulate the church at the chip my ten year anniversary and acknowledge with appreciation and comfort and service. Its ministry has provided to the, uh, yeah, provided to the cowboys, cowgirls, residents and visitors of the town. And, uh, sign that while ago. So that's, that's the first thing. There, I think there, I think there's some people in here actually attend. At least one person up here at the. Anyway, let's see here. Public announcements. Bike week, this too shall pass. It's inconvenient, I know it. But the businesses are paying for the, for the traffic control and all the extra deputies you see around. And if they weren't there somehow, we would be responsible for the, uh, trying to handle the chaos because those people come to Westworld and they're going to, they're going to come up here anyway, when, uh, when that, uh, offer was made to Mr. Bradshaw by a former town manager about twelve, thirteen years ago, somewhere in that timeframe. We, it would, the gentleman that, uh, Mr. Bradshaw told him, he says, if you stop it, you will not be able to, uh, or started, you will not be able to stop it. And unfortunately, uh, for a lot of people in town are really annoyed by that, which I can understand. I just don't know what to do about it. I don't think there's anything that can be, you, you deny the application. They're not ready. We got to take care of the traffic and the, and the attendance attendees. Having said that. Call the public.
There are none. There are no, um, members for the call.
There are not any? Well, I'll be doggone and town manager report, but there is no way that I'm going to have, after speaking to her today, I have no way I'm going to ask her to, to, to say a word at all to us. She has got a voice that sounds like a bag of rocks being rocked, knocked together. It's not too bad. Non-action items, none consent agenda, none general agenda item. Uh, and I think most of y'all are here because of agenda item number two. So let's go ahead and get that way of, that one out of the way. That is council discussion approval of purchase and installation of two new, uh, two new signature electronic message signs to be located on the Cave Creek Town Hall and Cave Creek Fire Station sites for an amount up to one hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and fifty two cents. There's been a tremendous amount of, uh, of social media outrage over this item. I think people really don't understand what it, what it's about, and therefore I'm going to ask my counsel if we can get a motion to table this indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? We're not even going to talk about it. It's gone. Let's go to agenda item number one, council discussion approval of resolution R twenty twenty two dash zero four, authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the town intergovernmental agreements between the town of Cave Creek and Maricopa County regarding animal control services for enforcement and sheltering. Placed on the agenda by the town manager, and we don't actually want to have her even talk to us. I can tell you, if you look in there, it's, uh, in our packet, it is annual cost. Was somebody going to present this or we just going to kind of wing it? I can, I can do it. I mean, we've done it a lot. Yeah. Annual cost of the town is a total of seven thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars, which is enforcement and sheltering of the animals. This is animal control for us. It's going to be a, going to be a, uh, financial item. So any question from council on this one? It's something we do every single year and like everything else that's gone up just a little bit. Anybody got questions? I'll do my best answer. No question. There is a comment on this one.
No one we should say.
We have none. We're back to council for motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sims.
Yeah, Carrie's not there. The contract is actually quite good. I mean, I, I do these for cities and towns across the state. I don't whether or not you have to decide if the financial arrangement is fair and equitable, but the contract is sound, the, the, the business deal is something you guys get to decide.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Prove resolution R twenty twenty two hyphen oh four resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the town intergovernmental agreements between the town of Cave Creek and Maricopa County regarding animal control services for encroachment enforcement rather and sheltering.
Second. Comments?
As you've said, Mr. Mayor, we've done this in the past. It falls right in place, and I think it's necessary. We continue with it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got to have somebody take care of the wild dogs. Um, this is a financial.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy A.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries six zero. You know, item number three, council discussion approval of scope of work with MGC contractors to install elevated walkways and staircases at the town of Cave Creek Water Treatment Plant for an amount up to one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Good evening, Sean.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as described, uh, when the town installed the Paul membrane systems at the Paul, uh, water treatment plant just over two years ago, there, they, they're actually in, uh, trailer units that actually live in the back of the treatment plant site. So that project was done fairly quickly. Um, there's a lot of piping. If you've been to the site itself, that's all over. So we don't have the best access into the trailers. So we actually worked with the vendor in the, this fall to actually come up with the design to do what they refer to as an elevator walkway or a catwalk, which will give us access to both the side doors of the trailer as well as the rear doors and have the staff that they can get on at certain locations and actually get above the pipe work that's on the site. So it has actually come up in our annual inspections with Maricopa County at the site that, you know, they're concerned about some of the access around it. So what's before you tonight is, uh, we actually reached out to a vendor in the fall. They came up with a conceptual design. Then we started getting pricing from them and what came up is that they did not include installation. And then we, they recently notified us that their, their estimates from the fall have drastically increased use of materials costs. So we started to reach out because installation was not included to MGC contractors via a job order contract to utilize to help them, uh, do the installation for us. They then reached out to another vendor to get a competitive price and actually they came up with it. So one in the package is subcontractor would be Keller, uh, would be actually constructing the staircase units and cells. And MGC would be coordinated installation. So, uh, the, the two pieces we're looking for approval for is the large catwalk, which will, um, actually envelop most trailers, provide access both to the rear and the side doors. As well as when you walk out of the plant itself, um, into the yard area, there's a staircase. Our staff have actually eliminated a couple of drain lines that actually allow us to lower the staircase that was built, um, via wood a couple of years ago and actually make a larger walkway. So we're asking for a little bit more authority than what MGC came up, uh, with. It's actually budgeted in our capital program this year, and we're asking for a little more authority because we do think once we get out there, there'll be a couple of adjustments we need to make. Uh, if you look at the drawings, they're showing sort of straight lines and those trailers aren't exactly straight. So, uh, we want to account for the fact that we want to get this done this year and provide better, safer access around the site for our staff. With that, I can answer any questions.
I have one. But, Mayor.
I like the idea that this addresses both safety and efficiency for the staff. Somewhere, I think on the future CIP, there are another two, uh, membrane systems. Will this, uh, enable people to serve those as well, or will there end up being a new one required for them?
What you refer to in the capital program, we have it, uh, it comes in a few years from now and actually goes back to when we installed the Paul membranes, uh, that was looked at as, as a pilot in the eyes of the regulator. So they've asked us to, uh, make a decision about which treatment technology we want to stay with. And in the CIP, we actually have removal of the West Tech Trident units a few years out and we, they actually are inside the buildings. What we do is remove all them and actually can start constructing some membrane treatment inside the building. The, the two units outside have a capacity about two million gallons or they're, they're permitted two million gallons. What we do is remove the West Tex and we'd actually build another two million gallons currently inside. So the, the plant will go up. Right now it's only ready for three million gallons a day. So we would add a million gallons of treatment capacity with the next project, but they'll be separate. The trailer units, there was a discussion initially of could we take the membrane units that are in the trailers out and install them in the buildings? But they're in fact a slightly different system than Paul would put in a, in a, a brand new installation. So it's, there's, there's not efficient to decommission them, take them out of trailers and put them inside the buildings. So, but they'll have a lifespan of, you know, ten, twenty years out of those trailers. They're in air conditioning environment. They're designed to be in that environment. The doors are closed, they're conditioned, et cetera. So there's no real reason to change them out. We might have to change out the membrane consets and just continue to do ongoing maintenance, maintenance to them. But the project that we have in the capital program is to supplement what's out there with the Paul membranes. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Silva.
If this were for some reason denied tonight, what would you estimate the cost perhaps on a percentage basis to be if this came back to us, say, a year from now? Given the rampant rate of inflation, materials, labor.
It's hard for me to put a hard number on it, you know, just in our overall, uh, capital programming, we're seeing cost estimates, uh, go up ten, fifteen percent, uh, right now. So
I'm sorry, what was that?
Ten or fifteen percent. So, yeah, I, I can't imagine that by this time next year that the, uh, we would have gotten any cost savings back. We would just have added to the project cost, but it's hard for me to speculate that far out right now.
And it's certainly an item that would need to be done eventually.
Yeah, in reality, uh, we, we tried to start it in the beginning of the year. The, there was a capital program that was funded by council, uh, to do some improvements at the water treatment plant. This is something we thought of when that was put into the budget last year. Uh, it's taken this long just because of staff resources to sort of get through this. And again, working with the one vendor and then having to re-scope it with another vendor. Yeah, if you've been out to the site, it is awkward. I won't say hazardous, but it is awkward for staff and we want to make it a better environment for them to work more safely. Thank you.
Councilman Morris.
Uh, so the Paul traders where they are now are temporary. Is that correct?
Well, we consider them permanent units. Um, they're, they're trailer mounted. We're, you know, again, uh, when we start, um, decommissioning the Trident filters and actually making space inside, we can start building more filters inside, but we don't need to get rid of these. We've purchased these. We have the option in several years, if we replace that capacity of maybe selling those on to someone else. But, um, you know, I consider them to be sort of a permit installation, permanent being five to 10 years. We're going to have these units outside.
Okay. What cheaper alternatives were considered?
Than the, the catwalk that was here?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we did talk about, uh, maybe even having someone come out and just do like a wood type of structure. We actually have some wood, uh, staircases right now around the site that are deteriorating. Um, so we, we've looked at that. That's why we went to more of the metal or fiberglass type of installation. It's more of an industrial type of setup. So that's why again, we, when we talked to the vendor in the fall, that was a similar system what they had. And that's what, um, whenever you see, uh, reached out to their subcontractor Keller, that's what they came back with as, as, as a better for more of an industrial situation that which is what we have is, is these assemblies. They sort of snap together, but they're actually also prefect, there, there has to be custom fabricated for our site specific.
What equipment's being accessed? Are these, are these to walk in the doors of the trailer or are there, is there equipment or valves or something up high that these are accessing or is this to walk between the trailers? What, what is?
What they're actually doing in, um, there's actually a graphic in the, uh,
It's a lot, it's long, narrow.
Yeah, what it's showing. Yeah, it's hard to see. I should probably better exhibit. What it is, is, is the, outside the trailers, there's a lot of, um, pipe work that both leads into the trailers and actually out of the trailers, we have drain lines, et cetera. So right now the staircases that staff access are actually on the rear of the unit. So they're actually using the large double doors. These are like the regular doors you see on a back, back of a tractor trailer taxi enter into the, the units. There actually are side doors to the units, but they can't access them currently because of, we can't, uh, efficiently place staircases there. We looked at doing individual staircases around the site. And then it was, uh, determined that it's better to actually do an elevated catwalk because there's so much pipe work. There's other, um, electrical components on the ground that we want to just get staff above that. So effectively that can still stay and that can remain the, uh, the piping electrical equipment, but we're going to elevate them with this catwalk that will give them both access to the rear of the units, which is really, they should be only opening when they actually go and do large, large, um, maintenance repairs and pull, pull equipment out and also give them full access to the side doors of the unit, which is the doors they should be using. Um, and it helps, uh, better environmentally seal the trailers by using the side doors.
These are not in the CIP, are they?
Oh, this was actually in the CIP. We actually.
This is first I have heard of it.
The program is called water treatment plant improvements. Um, so it was sort of a, um, when we did it, uh, we, it, it, I don't have the, uh, the full description in front of me right now, but we actually had a hundred fifty thousand dollars in this year's capital improvement program for doing improvements, site improvements at the water treatment plant, and we consider this part of those site improvements.
Has, have you seen the budget yet for the, for the, have you turned the budget yet in for the, for the upcoming year?
I have.
Water companies?
Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, the water companies are going to have to stand on their own now. They're, we're not going to, you're not going to get the big bucks from the general fund. Right? So this is not, uh, this is only, uh, targeted towards the time that those temporary, uh, traders are in use. This isn't, uh, something that we're, uh, that's going to be there and used forever.
Well, yeah, I look at the trailers as having, you know, five, maybe 10 year lifespan, if not longer. There's no reason why those trailers can't stay there and be part of, and we can better integrate the piping. We can do some other cleanup work, but there'll always be above ground piping that's causing issues for the staff to access them. So.
So you, you, you're planning to leave those traders there as part of the final solution when we get around to.
Right now in our, our, our 10 year capital program, yeah, we're not, we're not costing out to replace those trailers. We have a project to replace the Trident membranes and start building. Uh, but in the 10 year capital program, we haven't, and especially in the five year, we have not budgeted to replace those trailers.
Okay.
And the two million gallons treatment capacity they have. So, you know, we want to provide the best and safe access we can for our staff.
Anything else from council, councilman McGuire?
I, I see two issues here. One is, I'm impressed with the research. The other one is safety for our staff. Thank you.
Was there a question there?
Is that right?
I agree. I think staff will be very happy with this improvement. So.
Let's see here. Nothing else from council. There's public comment on this one as well.
None.
We have none. Wow, we're back to council. Somebody want to, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve scope of work with MGC contractors to install elevated walkways and staircases at the town of Cave Creek Water Treatment Plant for an amount up to one hundred twenty five thousand dollars.
Second.
Comment?
Safety, efficiency, and, uh, just generally a good idea.
Yeah.
No, sir.
All right.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, that was a yes from you.
Yes.
Uh, we're six zero motion carries. And we're on to the last item, which is council discussion or approval of main extension and water service agreement with the Brian T. Gold revoke, revocable trust to provide water service in Desert Hills. And I see Sean, this is yours again.
Yes, I'm up again. I have a presentation with some slides to help explain the situation. So I'll start and then I'll repeat it again is, uh, we're considering this to be, um, one of the, um, transition projects. Mr. Gold is in the audience tonight is actually, um, came to approach the town, uh, last summer, late last summer about purchasing a property and what improvements would be necessary. The property is located at the, uh, southwest corner of Paint Your Wagon Trail and Seventh Street in Desert Hills. I'll, I'll, I'll take the hit and say that we just haven't had time to get to it till now and, and myself, I have not had time to finish this off. So that's why, even though in the, when we adopted the water resource policy, we talked about transition projects in, in, in motion before the adoption of the policy in December. It's taken me this long just to get and get the contract put in front of you. So I apologize now. I'll, I'll apologize for that. But let me talk about the project itself and I can answer any questions council has. So it's, uh, what you're looking at is a picture there at the bottom of Paint Your Wagon Trail and Seventh Avenue. So we have about a twelve hundred foot gap in our, uh, Desert Hills wa, uh, water system. The property, um, is at the southeast corner of Paint Your Wagon South Avenue. Um, and really, when you look at it in the next slide, actually I'll show you better is that by completing this loop will actually provide a secondary access or secondary loop in the system for about eighty four customers in the system. And make substantial improvement. I think, um, this area is actually originally designed to be fed by a elevated reservoir that's off Central Avenue that's been out of service since the town took over the, uh, water system out in Desert Hills. It was taken out of service due to, uh, maintenance. It actually has some, a couple of bullet holes in it. Um, I've actually looked at and brought a vendor out to look at rehabbing that site and, uh, but by the time we do all the site improvements as well as, uh, the, the repairs to the reservoir are not substantial. It's just the rest of the site, uh, needs a complete rebuild. I'm looking at probably, you know, three quarters of a million, uh, dollars to rehab that site. But I think we can actually, uh, forego that cost by actually starting to look at doing things like looping the system. Um, a few months ago, I came to council and we talked about a project and you were, um, authorized an improvement project on Twentieth Street, uh, corresponding with a county roadway project that actually provided a secondary loop for about a hundred fifty, um, customers. I look at this similar. As we've been updating the mapping in the, in the distribution system out there, and as we've been studying and do more work out, uh, we're realizing that the lack of looping in the desert hill system is really the, the most substantial thing that we can impact with our customers. Uh, the customers in these areas, um, historically have had lower pressures and then it gets substantially less in, say, the, uh, summertime or sorry, the, uh, morning, mid morning when a lot of people are using it. So we see substantial drops in the pressures in this area. We believe that the looping will actually make a substantial difference with that. So, next slide, Brian. So, uh, what the action before us today is a, um, uh, the water resources policy. So the town will not provide new water services unless there's a contractual obligation. So we tried to bring this and again, this was on me for not bringing it forward sooner was bring this contract to council. And we consider part of the transition project out in Desert Hills, but the, um, the property owner is looking for up to three, um, residential, uh, water meters on the property. Uh, like all the other contracts we have going forward and all new services, we limit them to half an acre foot of, uh, annually per meter. When we looked at it, the demand placed by this system really didn't warrant an eight inch waterline loop around the corner. It's sort of a substantial improvement to the system. So we had discussions with the property owner about, um, you know, cost sharing and that's what sort of came up initially. There was discussions about them having to bear the full cost of this improvement. And then sort of fairness came into it. Um, so the part of the obligation would be to see that the property owner would pay for the easement or a grant, uh, an easement across their property currently does not exist. So Paint Your Wagon Trail. While there's right away on Second Street and right away, um, going west of, um, or east, sorry, of Seventh Street. I talked to Maricopa County and they have no plans of actually bringing, uh, Paint Your Wagon Trail through. So they, they're not requiring any of the property owners to grant easements across their properties to, to complete that loop. Once I found that out, then that's sort of limited us to, to complete this loop. We actually did need to get a property or an easement from, um, Mr. Gold with the property to the north. So that's real late as into, we need to work with one of the property owners. And then, uh, by doing this work, uh, Mr. Gold's actually reached out and got contractual, uh, estimates and then he's, uh, they're coming back about a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of work. This is twelve hundred, uh, linear feet of, of pipeline. Going to be a bit of some hard dig involved here because we're at the base of the mountain over there. So what we've talked about is doing a cost sharing and what do I mean by that? That's actually us paying for the town, paying for the design, uh, which gives us control over it. Uh, we would go through the permitting process. So we actually know the permitting process with Mayor, but both Maricopa County and, uh, Maricopa Environmental Services to get the, uh, design improved. And then we would, um, also look at waiving the capacity fees. So that total is, and we're allowed to do it by town code because it's actually the, the improvements they're doing provide a benefit, uh, far exceeding what they, uh, the demand they're placing on the system. So that's totaling about, uh, seventy, or my estimate is about seventy two thousand dollars for the work. So that's less than half of the hundred fifty thousand dollars that Mr. Gold has got as, as estimates on this work. So this is the, uh, cheapest this, the town will ever get this waterline loop. And I do think it is actually a very important, uh, loop for us to do to improve the service for the water customers out in Desert Hills, especially in this area. Next slide, Brian. Two things, um, I wanted to bring up to your attention is that, um, oh, actually I was supposed to hand these out. I apologize for that. Uh, we did the in your council package, uh, we did an amendment on, um, section one, seven point one and exhibit B to, to discuss this cost sharing. Cause I think the exhibits that you saw in the draft agreement did not have that. I apologize. It was going to end this out beforehand. Um, and that reflects what I talked about was the cost sharing that, uh, we would provide the materials. In some cases, it's actually beneficial. We've actually done this a few times, like on Twentieth Street. We were able to buy some materials to the contractors. The contractors are finding it difficult to get the materials. The vendors are actually, um, working them with the municipalities and sort of giving us a higher priority for getting materials and equipment. So that it's worked in our favor and we actually typically get, uh, cheaper rates for some of this because we're, we're doing withstanding contracts with them. So that helps lower the overall cost of the project. So section seven sort of outlines what we're agreeing to do and, and, uh, exhibit B has a, a little, uh, note box in the top, uh, left corner, which reflects what we agreed to, which, which mirrors section seven point one. And as I indicated before, uh, we're considering this one of the, a transition project because we actually started discussions back, um, before the water policy was adopted. The, um, property owner has not moved forward with development based on discussions that he's had with us. So, um, I, I, I firmly take the blame for not allowing him to move forward. He actually originally came in and asked for more lots. And he asked, uh, you know, his discussion was that if, uh, we couldn't come to agreements, then he could just drill a well and move forward with it. But I saw the benefit to the town if we worked with him to come up with a win-win situation where for the, um, the water resources associated with three residential water meters, we're actually getting a very substantial improvement in the Desert Hills water system and sharing the cost in that. So, uh, recommendation is that, uh, council, um, move, uh, approve the, the contract with the two amendments, which was to section seven point one and the updated exhibit B. With that, I can answer any questions.
So Sean, it's your, your opinion that the improvements to the system out there warrant giving up, up to an acre and a half, uh, one and a half acre feet of water and, uh, and doing a cost sharing?
I do. And actually, uh, after my discussions with Mr. Gold, he's actually indicated before even sort of talking about water conservation, when I sort of talked about the volume of what a half an acre foot was, he's, he was questioning why he'd need that much water. And doing things like onsite, he wants to do like a gray water system for his houses for, uh, on site landscaping and other things. But to answer your question specifically, I do think that the improvement, um, uh, would be worth the water resources. I think it would, the project would be more than double the cost that we're, uh, the town will end up paying for this and it'll make a substantial improvement out in Desert Hills.
Some, some by, by being looped, it's going to improve the water quality in the older water at the end of the line as well.
Water quality as well as just the fact that we'll have the serving areas really. Water quality as well as just the fact that we'll have the serving the areas, really the area along Central Avenue. That we see some pretty substantial pressure drops and dips in the system. Because they're they're fed from a single eight inch crossing across Carefree Highway, which when you start working your way back, there's actually a section of six inch line. Which is the constriction, provide water service to the majority of the eighty homes I mentioned. They're actually by Central Avenue inserted by the one connection and then one six inch line. So by having them tied back to the second eight inch crossing that we have, which is closer to the Tenth Street Booster Station. We should substantially be able to improve water flows in that area. Water age is one thing, but I'm also looking at just stabilizing the pressures in the line. When you can dual feed your system and loop your system, it's just much better than single feed of your system, which is what we have a lot in Desert Hills.
Councilmember McGuire?
Can you tell us the, in general, the amount of water that's used by our customers in our years? At half an acre foot, a quarter, a third of an acre foot?
When the we adopted policy, the half acre foot is what we had looked at and established. When you take all the customers and divide by the the water usage out there. We have some users that are substantially less than that, some that are higher than that. So that's just the average that we use when we develop the water resource policy and if you look at the water consumption overall.
Thank you.
Councilman Morris?
Three questions. How many more transition projects are in the pipeline?
This is the last one?
Yes.
I I noticed that the, and I haven't read that whatever we put in front of us just now. But the contract has is tight everywhere. Except it it talks about starting construction rather than completing construction. And we both know. There are projects in town that start and they don't complete. Meanwhile, we've spent the money for engineering or we spent the money for other things, other parts of town. Why didn't we put in completion? Some or have a bond or some way to ensure that if we put money into this, that it actually brings the benefit on a timely basis.
Well, actually, my discussions with Mr. Gold, he's actually eager and he's 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 been bugging me to get this done, so he can actually go to work. Yeah, well, we had discussion on that. I guess we could, there's actually a a section in the agreement that we could put that in. It actually allows for discussion on that. What the agreement? In front of me. There is a section in that we could look at adding that if Mr. Gold.
Well, I I'm in favor of this. If you had added add some kind of completion date, it has to be done by a certain date. I mean, you can, there's these automatic one year extensions in there.
Yeah.
And I can, I'm not going to, but you you can read my mind probably some of the projects and we have out there that we put a ton of money in.
Yeah.
And staff time, you name it, and towns get no benefit from it. So I'm eager to see if there's a benefit for us and we're spending money. I'd like to know when that benefit's going to start rolling the door.
The one thing we did put in is the agreement that Mr. Gold would actually, within ninety days, put the easement in place. So even if he didn't complete the work, we had the ability to complete the work. But at that point, if we complete the work, he won't get the water service. So. So and that was something that I contemplated with our, because we actually do have a water line improvement program in the capital improvement program for Desert Hills. And this is one of the, I think, the key projects we need to to get done. So when he came and approached us last year, sort of my eyes, my ears pierced pierced up and said, you know, we we if we can work together on this, we might. I could save the towns some money, but I see your point about having a date certain in it, so.
Would you, would you have to negotiate that or how would you, how would you have us memorialize that, put in?
I actually gave my copy of the contract to Teresa. So there's actually a section in the contract, I think it says to begin by, the contract does allow us for some flexibility, but I'm not sure.
And complete, but then one year or. You know, something.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Well, Mr. Gold being in the audience, if you'd be agreeable to.
Councilman Morris, if I can ask a question or make a comment.
Gets question time.
Why not consider having the property owner applicant put the money or part of it in escrow? And the instructions of the escrow would be that you have to start the project, or we would. After the design is complete and the pipe is out there. And then barring any force majeure issues, the development would have to be complete within the timeframe. That way, I'm sure we have all good intent there, but Councilman Morris's comments are well placed. We approve things and we spend some money on it and they're never started and they sit there for many, 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 many years. Is evidenced by developments that were started or approved in Maricopa County prior to the towns incorporation. And it took sixty years to finally get activated and approved. So I would ask you to consider that line.
Well, I'm not making a motion, but.
No, no, no.
I I'm.
Yeah. Teresa gave me a copy of the contract, so there's section nine, construction requirements, nine point one. It says, respect to the main extension, the owner estimates the construction start date of such and such and construction completion date. So right now, it's just the the language in the contract that we could fill in, which is just an estimate. So if we want to do a date certain, we'd have to do a quick little amendment, or I'm not sure how we would do that. I'm not sure Mr. Sims is on the line and he can maybe look at that, maybe chime in on what we would actually have to do to make that date certain.
You need to fill it in. I mean, whatever.
Yeah. But Bill, I think the problem is that it says estimated construction. It doesn't say date certain.
If if we're, if council's asking for a date certain, then we need to fill it in.
Okay. And to be honest with council is, this is important enough that, you know, if we design it and we get the easement and and Mr. Gold, for some reason, can't proceed forward with it. I think it's important enough that we would, this would be my one problem, my priority for the funding next year for that program. So this would consume the program by me leveraging, working with Mr. Gold, actually have the ability to do another water line improvement out in Desert Hills to actually improve another area. And get something else done, so. Yeah, if it's not getting done by next year, I might consider just completing it because that was my original intent. If we, again, if we pay for the complete construction installation, then Mr. Gold doesn't get water service, but he's actually eager to start building, so.
Counsel, are we through? Let's see, Bob Brighton.
Well, we haven't not motion yet, so. We're there.
We're done with questions. All right, well, there is public comment on this one as well. We have none? We're back to council.
I'll make the motion.
Actually, no, you can make a motion now. We're back, we're back for motion.
Oh, yeah, here we go. Motion to approve a main extension water service agreement with the Brian T. Gold Revocable Trust to provide water service in Desert Hills. And I'd like to, with the addition to section nine point four, after the word approval. And complete the construction one year later.
Second.
Just clarify, I guess with your motion, we actually also still need, we have to approve with the updated section seven point one and exhibit B.
Oh, okay.
Nine one.
Seven one, sir.
Yeah, and add the updated seven point one to your.
As updated with the with the seven point one. New language.
Updated second.
We have an updated motion and updated second comment. Oh, you had the motion, you want to?
I have no comments.
No comment?
This looked rational and we saw it several months ago. It's still rational and I think it certainly will help the quality and. And the little pressure issues that exist out there.
All right. We have some financial considerations on this one as well, so.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Bush?
Uh, yes, motion carries six zero, and that concludes the agenda items for this evening.
Mr. Mayor? I I have a question.
A question?
Yes, can I, can I ask a question? About a previous agenda item?
Sure.
Regarding agenda item number two.
Okay, once it's tabled, Bill, explain tabling. We didn't, we didn't.
Tabling to me, please.
It's some later date. We can't discuss it after it's done if I remember.
I just, I don't understand the definition of tabling. Long will it be tabled? Is it dead on arrival? I think that was done so quickly.
Bill's getting right answer.
I don't understand what that means.
Tabling is a is a formal process when you have a public hearing and you want to preserve all the hard notices publications. And so you table it to a date certain, so you don't have to republish. You could have just said continue to a date in the future and staff get back to us. In this case, table, either continue or table, there's synonyms here. And had this been zoning, I would have insisted that it be tabled. Here, you could use the same word as continue. And I think I think you need to get with staff as to whoever has the concerns. And ask Jim Ford to come back with it, with it, with a new recommendation. Or 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 bring it back again. He needs to find out why you all had concerns about discussing it tonight and then bring it back. But there's, you don't have to have, and that's why you asked Catherine. The reason normally we give you a date certain, so we don't have to republish in the paper. This didn't require a publication. So now it's just coming, it has to come back when staff's ready, when you're ready to consider it. So I think you need to talk to Jim, talk to the manager, tell them what your concerns were, so they can address them, then bring it back.
Do do a better job of explaining why they want to do, staff would like this.
Staff would meet with us.
Right.
In public or.
Yeah, public, nothing, yeah.
Have a public discussion to talk about messaging.
Right.
Right. Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, now we have a motion to adjourn? We did, didn't we? Okay, we're done. Good night.